The City of Lawrence's Common Council Parks and Recreation Committee to order today, July 2, 2025, at 6 o'clock. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll do a roll call of the members and determination of the quorum. First off, we have Kristi Groome, John Freeman, Liz Mazur, and where is your name tag thingy? You just forgot it?
I don't know.
Thank you. And Lisa Chavis.
Thank you.
And we have four of the four members, so we have a quorum. Can you hear me? Am I speaking into this correctly? Okay. And we have no unfinished business, but we do have new business, and that is the allocation of parks and recreation funds. And if you did not get an agenda of what we're doing, I think there are a few back there, Director Martin, if you would like one. Okay. You snuck it in. Okay. So the first thing we're supposed to start off with is a presentation by Counselor Carlos Jennings and Jason Horner of Horner Automation Group about the cost of installing lighting on Field Three at Community Park. But at this time, it looks like they're not here, so with your permission, we'll move on to the next item, which is number two, the ADA compliance swing set at Community Park. And as you'll note, there are no figures written down there, but we'll have Director Martin talk and perhaps Counselor Robinson talk about that.
Okay. Wait, who's first?
Good evening. My name is Betty Robinson. I live at 8055 Box Dell Way here in Lawrence, and I am a city counselor. I was contacted back in October 2024 by some residents that use the park, Community Park. Often, there's a home for the disabled in the community, and when they go to the park, there's nothing for them to do, nothing. So we had a dialogue about usage, what would best fit if they had equipment. I did not know what to do, so I called Eric, and he and I started having a dialogue. And this went on through the month of November or December. And then he gave me a cost. That's where we ended the conversation as to how much it would cost to have ADA equipment installed in the community park.
Good evening. Eric Martin, Parks Director, 1015 Alexia Drive here in Lawrence, Indiana. Just real quickly, yes, Counselor brought that to my attention. Actually, Diane Christmeyer, Chris Hammer at Lizardar Neighborhood has a child that's disabled, and she requested it also. I think that's where the information came from. But we found a vendor that's, it's Billy Goat, no Willie Goat, Willie Goat Playground Equipment. I'm not sure where they're manufactured, but they do have a website, and they have a two-frame, two-seat, single-frame post swing set that's accessible, and it with shipping would cost about $5,600. We have the means and the ability to put that in ourselves, so. Also, it's a small enough unit. I believe it's 14 feet wide by, safety zone of 14 by 12, so we could possibly do it in other locations also if you wanted to buy several and put them in, so. But that's just one vendor that we received a quote from.
Well, thank you. We will, now we're going to go back to number one, since Carlos Jennings, Counselor Jennings, thank you, Director Martin, and Jack Horner of Horner Automation Group, if you could come up to the podium, please. An overview is that we have been discussing putting in lights at Field Number Three at Community Park, and so these gentlemen have information about possibilities for that. So that's, they agreed to come and talk about that tonight.
I've never been on this side, so I don't really know how to start.
I'm sorry?
I've never been on this side of the microphone.
Oh.
It's my first time.
Name, address.
Hi, my name is Carlos Jennings. I live at 11704 Polley's Court for Lawrence. Let me start by saying that when I heard the number that we had paid three years ago for the lights for the first part of the baseball field, it seemed kind of high to me, okay? And I asked Eric to, he pulled up the estimate for me. I took a look at it, and when I looked at it, the only thing that kind of really, really stood out was the total price for the lights themselves, okay? And being that the company where I work for my day job, that's what we manufacture, it seemed a little bit high. But, you know, I don't want to just guesstimate, you know, if what I was seeing was wrong. So what I did was I talked to my friend here, Jason, who has a little bit more experience than I do on that side of the business. $47,000 and 400, $47,400 seemed a bit high for 20 LED lights, okay? And so with that being said, when we talked, we agreed. He looked at what currently we could pay for brand-new lights today, and I guess there's a variant, and so I would really want to let him explain the variant of the cost structure of, for instance, the lights themselves, okay? But based off of what we saw, the light should have been at about half. Let it be known that we don't actually do the install. We just basically sell to the installers, and then they would, you know, use our product. So I don't know, it looked to me like either they upcharged it quite a bit, or, because the labor cost in this was $8,600, it just seemed a bit high for the lights at, 20 lights, $2,370, that's too much money.
And so can Mr. Horner talk to what the actual cost would be through your business? Is that possible?
Yeah. Again, it's going to vary.
Oh, can you introduce yourself, where you live?
My name's Jason. Work at Horner Lighting. I don't live in the area. I live down in Bakersville. The light fixtures, how they're normally done is when an installer installs the product, they'll usually bump up the light fixture to build in extra income for themselves in that, which is maybe what happened here. But the lights themselves would be normally about half the price that was paid for, for the previous install on that. It's a common practice in the industry just to have that extra bit in there, just for them to be able to pay their people and make something on the product, or make something on the install, because a lot of the costing is based on just raw cost for it, for the labor. The labor's just, that's what it is, is to cost to be able to do it. The product itself, depending on, you know, where you get it from, what you're installing, all of that can vary greatly. Analogy I like to use is that, you know, people like steak. You can get steak at the Dollar Store. Doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to get it that. You can buy that steak there, it's not going to be very good. You know, you're going to go to someplace and get something that's a quality product. And it's the same thing with lighting, is that you can buy a really cheap, inexpensive product, put it in there, won't cost anything. So you want to kind of balance out for products what you're looking for on that area. You need to make sure that the install is done correctly, you know, the poles are verified and all that, and that may be what's included with this, with this PO. I wasn't involved with this, so I don't know on that. I can only speak from experience on lighting, specific to my company.
Madam Chair, if I can ask a question. So the $2,300 price, that is comparable to what was installed, or is it better?
No, that's what was charged for the last install. Like I said, now it just kind of depends on what you're wanting to install for that. Our top-of-the-line, you're looking at probably $1,400 to $1,600 per fixture, not installed, but just the fixture itself.
So it's considerably less to get upgraded?
It can be. There's still.
And I understand that there may be some other costs involved, but we're just talking about the LED light itself?
Yeah. If we were to sell the LED lights, the raw cost on that would be lower than this. So it would depend on who your installer is, on how they handle that.
Okay.
Because like I said, a lot of them tend to roll more into it to be able to afford to, you know, pay their people a wage.
But, okay, maybe one other question. So roughly, and I understand, I'm talking about pure costs, not all the extra upcharges for labor and all of that. If you were selling us the lights, how much would the quantity that we need, how much do you estimate that would cost?
If you're just talking about the other field, if it's assumed that it's the same as this, it's going to be, it would be $1,598, I think is what it was, for the price of just the light fixture, and that's.
$1,598?
So like $1,600 times?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay.
Again, that's, that's just the straight cost for that.
And do you, does your company have, and this is just out of my curiosity, but do you have preferred installers that you refer your?
Most of the time, we do not, we'll work with a company. We don't normally deal with any sort of government agencies or anything like that. We'll deal with a company, and they'll usually have four or five people that they deal with, and we talk to them and work it out through them.
Okay.
So I don't have anybody directly for that.
That might be Director Martin, I guess.
Yeah, Director Martin, do you mind being put on the spot and come up and?
No, those, that was for Field One. We did pay $68,000 for that contract. It was for our electric, and I'm not sure who the supplier was on the fixtures themselves. And Mr. Jennings was right, I think $8,500, $8,600 for install for, because they utilized the wires that were still there, the switchgear, that's all still there. This Field Three would probably take a few more lights because it is a larger field and the specifications, depending on what is required. Of course, senior ball has higher specifications. You need more light on the field than you do for Little League or a smaller.
And Field Three is for?
It's a larger field, so it would probably take more lights or more intense lights.
So like 25, 30 lights?
Yeah, we'd have to have it actually engineered out to make sure we're getting the right candle watts, lumens on the field itself, so to make sure it's.
So that's an additional cost to have an engineer determine?
That's what I was.
Well, most lighting companies do that in-house. They'll, they will set, and then they'll specify that they need a 1,500-watt, whatever light fixture they might need and how many they might need, and then the contractor will go to the supplier and get pricing on those fixtures, so. It could, it could cost a little more than what we paid, but if this gentleman's willing to sell at his cost, yeah, I'm sure there was some markup on the last quote that we received.
Yeah.
But since this is a single-source install, we don't know.
Madam Chair, I'm asking a follow-up question. So out of, how much of priority or importance is this to you?
At this time, probably not highest on the priority list, because we did light Field One. The numbers that play at Fall Creek Softball and Baseball aren't, it's fairly small. They can get most of their games in during the daylight, and they just use the one field. If they, if their league grows and participation grows, then yes, I could see that, but it's not a, as far as the Parks Department is concerned, it's not a priority at this point.
Okay.
So can you tell us what a priority is?
Which the priorities are?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you very much.
Jeff wants to interject here real quickly.
Don't get old, still gimping around. I know, Liz.
You are a horse, we would shoot you.
Yeah, there you go. Jeff, President of City of Lawrence Parks Board, we're talking about priorities. Eric and I have been meeting on this, and it's like anything else, we can build anything nice that we want, but, you know, the cost comes into maintaining it, and that's what we're starting to run into with the additions, everything from Civic Plaza, the cultural campus, whatever, to pickleball courts. This is not an editorial comment, it's just a fact. Unigov continues to put the screws to the City of Lawrence when it comes to its park system to the tune of a million-plus dollars a year. That's not going to change unless we get, unless we squeeze our friends in Indianapolis or we show some, and this is an attack, in this administration or the previous. I was vicious with the others. Eric and I have worked in the City of Lawrence for every mayor since 1984, and Lawrence didn't become an incorporated city until 63. So unless we do something to try to recoup maybe some of our dollars from the million dollars a year that literally from our taxes go to Indianapolis to support their park system, we're handcuffed. So when it comes to priorities, we were looking at the list, and I thank this committee for coming together. I've served on the Parks Board since 2001, and this is the fourth time the Parks Committee has gathered. Couple of the other times was because the Park Committee didn't approve who was on the Parks Board at the time. So thank you very much. I do, and this is not being flippant, I appreciate the opportunity that we have the council and not just the executive giving a rat's behind about our parks and the like. We have not seen real true dollar increase to our parks budget in forever, but I discussed with the mayor today and all mayors before, Mayor Whitfield, we're expected to put on five events a year, don't screw those up, including, you know, various parades for our youth sports leagues and the like. Those are great photo ops for those of you who run for election, and I get that, I can appreciate that. But after that, our department has been relegated to just cutting grass and lighting ball fields. Silent, and we're more than that. We have a cultural campus. I'm proud I signed off on all those buildings. We have a Civic Plaza. As re-use authority president and Parks Board president, I signed off on that. We've grown, but we have to find a way to either increase our revenue or improve the products that we have. So priorities from, and like I said once more, I appreciate this committee reaching out with some real dollars. In real terms, we do need ADA compliant. I love to get a dig in with some of my other wing, that's DEI people, if you like it or not, I love doing that, but we have got to get there at Community Park. You know, our special needs swings is that was one of those that was brought up. Taking care of cleanup and painting at Explorer Park is very important. That's a neighborhood, that's a pocket park, and that gives this community, Eric and I, I grew up actually in Harrison Park, but graduated from high school at 49th and Elmhurst Drive, and before I got to meet Mr. Martin when I was in college and that. That's a pocket park, and those people really need, we've got to show these neighborhood parks that this city's committed beyond lining baseball fields and soccer fields. I've coached 43 years, so you know, should know where I stand when it comes to athletics. I support that. And then the importance of taking care of the needs out at Veterans Park. Those are practical needs that we have got to meet. And then one of the, our goals is we've already started in doing some improvements at Lee Road Park. Started with pickleball. We don't play Little League baseball out there anymore, but the plans are in place to put a sand volleyball out there with our agreement with Circle City Athletics, CCA. They already use the big baseball field two, three times a week, and they use the pickleball courts also. We as a department have to find ways to raise revenues also and to improve, you know, the quality of life that out here, you know, the live, work, play concept is anything new. It's the buzz phrase, but it's reality. So if we're looking at priorities from this committee and gathering that was presented to the Parks Board, and Mr. Tom Burns is here, a member of the Parks Board, I used to live a newspaper to him, went back when I was a little tiny.
Stay on topic. Come on.
So we all understand that we have an interest here, but those are our priorities from a Parks Board. And, you know, going down the list of the other things are nice, but what can we do realistically, and what are the most practical things? Because, you know, we've got a study for a community park. We can build all the nice new facilities we want, but we've got to be able to pay to maintain them, and we're starting to be in a squeeze to do that.
Okay, so maintenance is a major?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I do have a couple, I do have some figures for the ADA swing I told you about. The engineered wood fiber, it's mulch, that's what we put underneath our playground, but it's specially cut so it compacts and can be ADA accessible. Eight loads of 720 yards at a list price of $17,840.
Okay, I'm sorry, are you on six?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we're jumping down to six, and so this is some mulch stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and this is something that you can really use?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the good of the order and for the constituents out there, the funds that the council has available, that we determined that we wanted to give those funds to parks because we recognize that there's a budget shortfall in your department, must be used for capital improvement projects. So as far as like maintenance, as long as, it has to be capital project. So I just wanted to put that out there.
So most of the things I have listed here are maintenance in aspect, I believe.
And perhaps in your, I don't know how much you have expended versus what was budgeted for capital in 2025, but if maybe we can absorb those?
Okay.
Then that would free up those funds to use towards maintenance? As a possibility, right? I mean, we can do that?
Well, we didn't have any 400s actually, any capital funds allocated to us, so what we had on our 2025 capital assets projected was the Veterans Park paths at $40,000, paths at Community Park, and then the playground at 45th and Richart, and those all totaled $190.
And has, has all, have you spent all?
We didn't, we didn't have any out, that $190 was not allocated.
So, so that could be potentially, you know, one or two of those items we may be able to look at?
I would say some of the paving, the pathway, Veterans Park, we promised them that, and then also the 45th and Richart Park could certainly use a new piece of player equipment.
Okay.
So I was, I'm sorry that I thought we were looking just at.
Yeah, unfortunately, it has to be capital, but I mean, I think those two that, of the three that you just called out would be great.
The ADA swing set.
And the ADA swing set. I think you mentioned it earlier, but I would like to see us do as many of those as possible.
And we might be able to retrofit the actual swings into a regular bay instead of, so we wouldn't lose, so we wouldn't have to put in new equipment. I'll take a look at that, see what we, as far as putting one or two at each park location to, so.
And also if there's, if there's any other ADA park equipment other than swings that we could look at, you know, maybe we do a swing set and something else at a park, just to give some variety so that, you know, the only option isn't just the swing.
If we put in a playground at 45th and Richart, then it would have to be, it would be accessible.
Yes.
So we would make.
And do you have the, I'm sorry, I can't remember what you said the estimate was on that.
That one, you can, we priced $45,000 in our budget. If we wait until the fall, we could probably get some fairly nice piece of equipment for $45,000.
Okay.
The, just like any manufacturer, they try to get rid of things in the fall.
Yeah.
To go into their next year production, so we've used Game Time Equipment for years out of Fort Payne, Alabama, and they do a great job, and they usually give us good pricing. They have a spring and a fall pricing, so I would suggest we wait until fall to do something.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we are moving on from, so we're saying number seven, repainting the shelter and restroom, since that's maintenance, we really can't do that. And then we will switch back to number three, clearing out undergrowth next to Post Road, CSX Railroad tracks, and that is?
That's all labor.
What?
That's labor.
Yeah, that's labor and maintenance, so that is something that we really can't do with this. For, I hope I'm not driving you all nuts jumping around, but number eight, the strip of native pollinator-friendly plantings at Explorer Park, that is a project that is capital improvement, under my definition. What say you, Counselor Chavis?
I personally think it's a stretch, but I'll let the attorney speak on that.
Yeah, it's a bit of a gray area, you know. To the extent we do have projects that are prioritized, what we'd want to do is make sure that we're very comfortable, that they would fit within the capital projects definition. And so this one's probably not as clear, but if it becomes a priority, we can look into it to see how comfortable the council could get with that.
Okay. And so now we are going on to nine, now under supplies, that works as capital improvement. And so now we are going on to nine, now under supplies, that works as capital improvement?
Yes.
And I want to state that one of the, the motto of the City of Lawrence now is live longer in Lawrence. And these supplies will help people in Lawrence live longer and also healthier. Because if you have battery-charged equipment like leaf blowers and weed whackers, instead of releasing as much pollution as driving a truck a thousand miles in just a half hour, the batteries are much better to reduce pollution, which I think is important for the health of our community. And so these are just examples of the cost of battery-operated weed whackers and leaf blowers. And additionally, they're quieter too, because I get concerned about the hearing of the people who operate this equipment. And now I'm going to open it up to the floor for more comments. First of all, councilors, do you have any comments?
For the, for the battery-operated equipment for lawn care, I'm wondering if the battery-operated is more, I'm not saying sturdy, but can I use it more? Because I know you have to take the battery out, charge it, put it back in there. And if you're on a project on a high, on a, our streets, I don't think that would.
Mr. Jenny, Councilor Jennings, would you be willing to address?
I was gonna.
Yes.
You were gonna ask.
No, I was trying to get Eric.
People do the word.
Oh, well, I mean, I just wanted to, to know, I mean, if you're out there doing a project, is, is the battery stuff more efficient?
What the life expectancy, so.
Right.
Today at Community Park, we had two guys weed eating almost all day. So in preparation for July Fourth, just to make, clean things up. I don't know how many batteries that would take. So I would think that if it's just an individual with two or three batteries, that might work. I don't know how fast they charge and things, but, but we'd be willing to give it a try and, and to see and do a comparison, I guess, and then go from there. I don't, we do have an electric chainsaw that we use almost every day. The guys pick it up and take it with them in case they have a limb or something down. Then they don't have to carry fuel in their truck. And that's fine just for little bitty things. But if we had to go out and do a big job, it doesn't facilitate, it doesn't facilitate that, but.
Do you know of any other counties that have that?
I don't.
Mr. Vest, would you like to come up?
I don't like batteries.
No, I, I second Liz in the concept of, you know, going from the non-combustible format. If it can do the same thing that the current machinery can do, we all know that. It's going to be a cost upfront. I know the maintenance in the long run of battery-powered is lower from far as a pollution standpoint where the batteries made, they still have to be shipped here and the like. We can argue that one day. But I did my homework assignment today and I looked at McCordville, Fortville, Westfield that now has its own city parks department. You only see smatterings. Yes, we would be on the cutting edge if we were to adopt a whole non-combustible engine approach to caring for our green spaces, we would, it was just a smattering out there. When I went home today and made some phone calls. To say others are doing it would, and say no would be incorrect. And to say a bunch of them are doing it would be non-factual, so it's somewhere in between.
Okay.
And I, again, we've, we've got a battery-powered chainsaw. It's a DeWalt, I'm not sure what, what you were looking at. But it, you know, we've got a little blower. Of all things, we take it to the community center and instead of sweeping, because people throw glitter out in the community center, we use that blower to blow it into a corner and then we can sweep it up. So we use that indoors. So we do have, we do have some use for them. We would, we would certainly be willing to try it. And report back to see if it's, if it's working or not. I know that the weed eaters are almost disposable now. We, we, we buy them for years' worth and we replace the heads once or twice. And then they're pretty much done after a year because they are used and abused for that year, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carlos Jennings, would you like to? Come on up to the podium, please. Up to the podium.
What I wanted to ask was how much, do, do we maintain the, the motors on those hedges?
On the, well, again, we'll, we'll run for a season or two and then if.
And then that's it?
That's it, yeah, yeah. They usually, something else is turned along before the engine.
But we don't really do maintenance on motors or anything like that?
Not really, we'll replace a reel coil or, or in a head or something. But generally, once the engine itself quits working, then we just.
Because your thought is, is that it's cheaper to replace it than to try to repair it?
So the head wears out too?
Those do, yeah, those are replaceable because they hit them on, on the ground.
How much does fueling cost?
At the day, they probably went through two or three gallons of fuel, so ten bucks with the oil. It'd probably be another twelve or fourteen dollars for fuel for the day.
For the days, that's per day?
Weed eater string, but that'd be regardless.
That's per day, yes, that's regardless, okay.
So there probably are some ongoing costs that can be eliminated.
Because, okay, so there are companies that do like all, all-electric lawn care services, okay?
You mean all battery?
All, all-electric, which means all battery, yes.
Yeah, okay.
There's one, there's one guy you can look up, I forget the name of his company, but he does, he does, he's got an ego set up. And he uses that archetype. But it is expensive, the upfront cost for the amount of batteries. He uses a solar panel on top of his trailer and then he's got an inverter on the inside. I don't mean to get into the weeds, but he's got all the tools necessary to do multiple yards all day long, okay? And he runs his business and it's my, it's my understanding that he's very profitable doing it. A lot of communities want to use that type of service because it's quiet and all, and all, all the, all the other stuff. I, I'm unconvinced that, that we would be able to see a savings as to whether we should do something like that unless the equipment's donated to us, you know. Because they're, because of the larger upfront cost. I know that, I mean, I've got, I've got, well, you guys know, everything in my house is all electric. My lawnmowers, my robot, my, my cars, everything, right? And there is a high upfront cost, okay? The benefit is there's no maintenance. And so when he tells me that, that the motor is not the thing that, that breaks down, it's more the heads, well, there, there would be no difference with a, with a weed trim. The heads are going to wear out, just as like my electric car, it still needs tires, for instance. You know, they, they're going to wear out, so. So with, with that being said, I, I, I would, it'd be hard for me to justify the large upfront cost unless we can see the savings somewhere else down the line. Make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have officially gone through the nine items. Any input, more input comments? Councilor Crown?
Thank you, just comments. I wonder, when I was doing some research on the ADA playground equipment as well, I was wondering like if we've got the structures, if we've got the skeletons that, you know, and, you know, everybody goes to a, I'm not saying we have it here, but like you go to a park, there's always going to be skeletons without swings. And so I was kind of wondering, like, is that something that we could do? Is like what he said, retrofit it for something else that it's not necessarily, you know, designed for? But I don't know, you know, different weight, and I don't know if the poles that they have are strong enough, you know. I don't know anything about that. But that was just kind of stuff that was bouncing around in my head. And then someone else's point, not just swings, like they have other things too, more expensive. The swings that are the least expensive. But, you know, if you're a kid, you want to, you want to bounce around and play around in different things. So, those are my, those were my thoughts.
Councilor Freeman?
About that.
I am still looking over. I think my questions were answered about the, the battery-operated lawn equipment versus the gas. And the clearing of the, like you said, that's labor and maintenance. And the clearing of the under, undergrowth by the Benjamin Square neighborhood, that, to me, would probably be labor and maintenance also. So, I am, my questions have been answered.
Councilor Chavis? I, I think that maybe at some point in the next month or so, we probably need to have a follow-up committee meeting just to sort of re-prioritize and maybe have Director Martin and Mr. Vest, Mr. Burns, maybe bring some other capital projects recommendations to that next meeting so that we can, you know, take a look at those. But other than that, good meeting.
Anyone from the floor, Mr. Burns? Jamie, Ms. Wyre?
I just want to say thank you that this committee gathered, I appreciate that a lot. After twenty-five years, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Back to cleaning out the undergrowth, since that's not connected with CSX, I know that there have been community-wide, like cleanup days. Is that within the scope of that or?
Could be.
Like, could it?
Sure.
Cleanups.
That would be the administration's.
Right, yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't fall under our purview. But like, is that something we could recommend, maybe, if it's safe enough? You know, I don't want to, when we're talking under a bridge, I don't know what's under there. I don't want it to be dangerous for people. Well, snakes, I mean, I'm talking more like broken glass and things like that.
Not snakes.
You don't have to go.
Snakes are good.
They are good.
We will close this meeting, thank you very much, everyone in attendance.
I've only ever had one snake in my backyard. And I'm not going to lie, I jumped up on my lawn chair and called my children in the house. I did, it was like two summers ago.